Come to order, Mr. Frazier, call the roll.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Isgru?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
I believe we have, we're gonna do a presentation first.
Yes, President Baker, I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Wright as we have an award that we would like to present this evening and I'm gonna let Mr. Wright do the introduction to that.
And actually, I'm gonna ask Tim and Tyler from Horseman, they're gonna say a quick word here and then I'll get with the presentation. I'll let you guys use the microphone.
We just want to thank Hamilton City School Board for allowing us to come. We really appreciate the opportunity to help educators and impact their lives. I was a former educator for eight years and just getting back into the schools to help them, I think, is really important. So, we're here just to present and help Hamilton City School District give an award out that's very well deserved.
Yeah, and we have been presenting awards all over southwest Ohio. This is our most prestigious. This is called our Crystal Owl Award. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike and talk a little bit about the recipient.
And Mike, you can use the podium.
Okay, I'll do that. So, as we come to the end of the school year, we always like to take the opportunity to recognize individuals for their service to the district. Working with Tyler and with Tim and Horseman Insurance Company, we are fortunate enough to recognize staff who have impacted our district. Horseman provides Crystal Apple Awards for educators. And this year, we've actually expanded that recognition program to also include the Crystal Owl, which they just mentioned, for a district staff member who contributes to our continued success. Betty Ross, a 1976 Garfield High graduate. I had to tell a little fib to get her here. So, Betty Ross, a 1976 Garfield High graduate, came to work in the district in January of 2003 after having already worked 21 years at Square D in Oxford. Starting out as a substitute clerk and an educational assistant, Betty eventually became a full-time clerk at Hamilton High in the fall of 2004. In 2015, Betty was promoted to a data applicant specialist at the administrative offices here, which eventually moved over to the Miami School. During her time in this position, she's continued to adjust to the ever-changing state requirements with regard to attendance and has served as the district trainer for newly hired clerical staff across the district. Betty Ross will be retiring from the district at the end of next month after 20 years of service to the district. We would like to recognize her as our first Crystal Owl Award recipient in the Hamilton City School District, and I would ask her to please come forward to accept the award. That would be the first time she's ever been at a loss for words.
I do want to say thank you and just say it's been an honor and a privilege to work for Hamilton City Schools. My family has worked for Hamilton City Schools, not only myself, my husband, my son, and now my daughter. We've been a part of this district for like 73 years, and that's something I'm very proud of. Thank you.
Mrs. Ross, just wanted, right here, right here, just on behalf of the school board, I'd just like to say congratulations to you. We appreciate all your hard work and wish you the best in retirement. And trust me, since I'm retired, it's a great thing. Yep, well deserved.
Betty, I want to thank you. I really want to thank you for your service to the district. Mr. Wright wrestled me to give that intro since I know that you worked extremely close with him as we opened the Miami School and your transition over there. And I, you know, there's never a substitute, you can never substitute years of experience, but more importantly, your dedication to the district. Your family's dedication to the district speaks volumes, and I want to personally thank you for everything you've given to us. Thank you.
Okay, I believe we, oh yeah. I just wanted to hang around, you're more than welcome.
That's why we moved you up first, so you didn't have to sit around.
Thank you.
And you guys thought this was gonna be a well-attended school board meeting?
Yeah, I was like, whoa. Okay, I believe next on the agenda, we have Melissa Harvey, who is gonna give us an update on athletics.
Yeah, let's take this down just a little. I first want to thank you guys. I want you to know that every day I come to work, I come very humbled, just to try and make our department the best that it can be. This program, this department's very near and dear to me. It kind of gave me who I am today, and, you know, just through all the involvement that we've had, every day I walk in and I want to make a difference. And I want you to know that that has not changed from the time that I was here two years ago as kind of an interim, that passion has grown. And even though our progress has been slow, a wise man to the left of me told me that it would take me five years to really impact our athletic department. And although I wanted to do it in one year, I believe that we are making progress and that those things are coming slowly, but I think the end result of the plan that I have in place and the people that we're putting in place to pull those out are gonna be great for our district. Introducing my staff, I have Jamie Cox, my administrative assistant. Mike Dole is quote-unquote "my clicker" today, so I didn't have to do it. Arby Crouch is my assistant A.D. I have a great staff, and they work tirelessly for me, and we actually are a really great team together, and so I feel very fortunate to have them. So, as we kind of move into this, and you guys, I know it looks long, I promise it really isn't, it's just a lot of slides. Who's new at Big Blue? So, I brought in six new coaches this year. I keep bringing them in, hoping that we get the right ones, no, I'm just kidding. We're there, we're getting there. We brought in Arby Crouch as our football coach. He did a great job this fall. The things that I've seen in the offseason are gonna show tremendous benefits as we move forward next year. I think that when you come in the first year, you're just trying to kind of clean things up and get your own plan, and I think he has that. Tom Westrick is our new tennis coach. We brought in two Hamilton alumni on the next slide, and that's Jason Parsons for boys soccer and Kayla Rogers for cheer. When you bring in graduates of Hamilton High School, I believe that what they bring is a different level of coaching because they know our kids, they're invested to our community, what they got out of our sports program has brought them back. And so, when I hired them, these were home run hires for me, and I feel very fortunate that they came back and that they wanted to give back to our sports programs. Sierra George was our new basketball coach. She's young and energetic. She brought kind of a breath of fresh air to our girls' basketball program this year. Wins and losses may not have changed a whole lot, but I can tell you that what's happening in that program has changed dramatically, and that's a credit to her. She has worked tirelessly to build this program, and I will say, even through all the ups and downs this year, she kept her entire roster intact. And I think that says a lot, when you're struggling with wins and losses and you're struggling with a lot, she kept the entire roster there, and it was very young, so I look forward to what she brings next year. Tony Santos is another one of our alumni. He's coaching our wrestling program. He was a two-time state qualifier when he was here. That goes miles with our kids, that they can see that and that they know that it's attainable because that coach can prove to them that it was done. He was also an All-American from the National High School Coaches Association. In one year, he has increased our numbers tenfold, and he has also started a girls' program. The OHSAA started that in January of last year, and Tony was totally driven to get a program started, and we had eight girls wrestle this year, and it takes seven to have a team, so that's great for him. Moving on to our conference, I believe the GMC is the toughest conference around. I will say that straight up. I would say that to anybody in the GCL, anybody in the SWAC, across the board. I believe that we just have a tough conference. We had some coaches get Coach of the Year, and our first one's Matt Nickel. Believe it all academic, the academic quiz team falls under my regime, which is interesting because he comes in to have conversations with me, and I'm like, gosh, Matt, can we pull out the jeopardy and call it a day? Because you're way over my head right now. But I will say this, he's a great guy. His passion for his sport is as great as the passion for any other athletic sport that we have. He rose from, he finished fifth place this year, they were seventh last year, they were ninth the year before. He really has got the kids kind of working on their own, like he comes in, Vince Keep, if you know Vince at all, Vince is super excited to be a part of the academic quiz team. They actually have get-togethers where they practice together. That comes from Matt, and he was named Coach of the Year by the coaches of the conference, so that was a true honor for him. Our next one was Steve Heckman. Wow, I could go on and on about Steve. I started coaching, well, I was coaching before him, but I coached with him in the 90s, and he's still doing it, and he's doing it really well. And this year, they finished 13 and 5 in the league, they finished in third place. Last year, they were 8 and 10, and the GMC coaches made him co-coach of the year, and I think that that's out of the respect that those coaches have for him. And, you know, a lot of times, we say, coaches who have been around for a while, they're not as energetic and they kind of lose their drive. Steve Heckman is not that guy. He is their biggest fan, he is their biggest cheerleader. I walked out on his field the other day, we were hosting a non-Hamilton event, and I felt like I was kind of on hallowed ground stepping onto his field, like I walked out with a rake to make sure that everything was just perfect because it made me really nervous to be out there because of how good of a care he takes of things. So, him being named co-coach of the year at this stage in his career is a true credit to him. We had some athletes make all-league selections. In our league, it's tough, you know, we have a lot of tough teams at the top, and unfortunately, we're not at the top yet, so it's tough to get those all-league selections. But in the fall, we had five teams represented, highlighted by our three first teamers, one from soccer and two from football. And then we had, I believe there was 10 more that made second team for the fall, which is a true credit to them and how hard they're working. Even though we're not getting the wins and losses, or the wins that we need, they're still getting recognition from opposing coaches. In the winter, we had a true diverse group, chess and academic to bowling and boys basketball. Caleb Thomas, the chess guy, finished first team, and, you know, we had some wrestlers in there. Vince Keep, again, I mentioned him earlier, he was a second-team guy for all-academic. Cooper Matthews made first team. So, we had six of our eight winter teams recognized, and again, our winter was a little bit better, we just have a long way to go. In our spring, four of our five teams were represented, highlighted by three first-team all-league softball selections, further demonstrating the season that they had this year and the respect that they got from the league. We also got some softball, we got a volleyball player this year, and our track team was named third team. Probably the slide that I'm most proud of, when I think about where we stand in the GMC, our all-academic awards are very important to me. I firmly believe that those awards let us know that we're doing the right things with our student-athletes and that we've got kind of the right value system going. Fifty-three percent of those that were eligible, and they had to be varsity athletes, non-freshmen, they had to have a 3.3 or higher cumulative GPA, 53% of our athletes this year were named That makes me very proud, and it's attributed to our coaches who put that, you know, on our kids to make sure that they're eligible and to keep those standards high. I think it's a credit to our kids who not only get home late, but they do things the right way and they get their work done, and they set those examples in the classroom. We talk about some of our season successes, and I emailed our coaches because I figured they're the best ones to ask. What are your highlights? And I was always kind of, I liked and I enjoyed reading what they considered some of their highlights were and some of the things that they value as far as their program is concerned. In our fall, our cheer squads took first place at our GMC cheer competition. Obviously, that's very important to me, being a 20-year coach. Kayla Rogers, again, being that alumni kind of coming in, she gets it. Our football team was named all-academic Ohio. They volunteered all over the city, which lets you know that Coach Crouch has things going in the right direction. He not only has, you know, the great student-athlete part of it, he's got them volunteering, and he also has them working really hard on the field preparing. Head coach Josh Sams recorded his 50th win in soccer. Our footsle had its largest season ever, having 120 girls involved in our footsle program. Our boys golf increased numbers to the point that we had a full varsity and a full JV team and even had subs. Our boys soccer cut their goals against them by almost half. Coach Parsons also created a slogan called "Be the Change." And although the wins and losses weren't there, the change that I saw in that program, I cannot wait to see what he brings next year to our fall boys soccer program. In the winter, anytime you get to watch somebody drop 39 points in a basketball game, you've seen something pretty special. Cooper Matthews did that. It placed him in our record books, just under Norm Greavy, who scored 42 one night. But as far as in the Hamilton Athletic Center, Cooper Matthews now holds the record for the most points scored in one game, and it's not that it was against an easy team, it was against Princeton. And had he not missed a few three-pointers or a few foul shots, he would have easily surpassed Norm Greavy that night. So, that was a great highlight. Our wrestling team, again, and I told you earlier, Tony increased our numbers, but not only did he increase our numbers, we had the first winning season in duels in six years. He finished 18 and 5 in duels this year, and that, again, is a credit to what he's doing to our program to turn it around and to keep those kids involved. And his level of attentiveness to their needs and to their skill building is gonna show great things later, but right now, those are really great. At 18 and 5 this year, he did one heck of a job turning things around. Again, we had our first-ever girls' wrestling team. Our swim team, Coach Wagner has just got it going. It's unfortunately that we're in the GMC because Mason usually kind of runs the GMC, but what Coach Wagner is doing with that, with our swim program, is amazing. We broke a 41-year-old record, a 42-year-old record, Hazel Culver broke a 20-year-old record. We had qualifiers, four qualifiers in district. We had a boys team qualify, and that hasn't happened in 25 years. The relationship that she has with the fit and why that allows us to just walk across the street, that community connection that allows that to happen, and her energy about her program, this is only gonna get better. I'm gonna go out on a limb, and I say this sincerely, I believe in two years, we'll have a state qualifier in swimming. And that hasn't happened probably since I was in school. I can think of Christina Multer, who I went to school with, it was probably one of those, but it's been a while. We also brought back middle-school swim. It was, Coach Wagner determined that that was important enough to do, we brought that back, and we had probably 20 middle-school swimmers participating. Again, getting those middle-school kids involved is really important. In the spring, our track improved 28 of 34 events this year. The training style of Coach Kinsler is really starting to show some benefits. He's getting those personal bests up, he's getting our times down, he's getting kids involved, he's getting them to stay involved, he's actually getting kids to compete against each other to see who gets to compete in those varsity meets. Clint Moke recorded 68 strikeouts, which was third in our conference. They finished with a 94% fielding average this year. Our softball team, Emily Schopacher, recorded 169 strikeouts. Get used to saying that name. It took me forever to learn how to spell it, and I still spelled it wrong occasionally. This kid is special. She threw a no-hitter as a freshman. She has three more years to guide this Big Blue program. Kaitlin Polito recorded 136 hits this season alone. The record was set by Autumn Marshall, which was 150. That was over four years. Kaitlin Polito did this in three seasons. Even going a little bit farther, this kid struck out one time this year. One time. Five times in her career. She has been special to watch. J.C. Taylor was another one who recorded, she recorded her 109th hit, and she batted 453 for the year. So, our softball kids were getting it done. Some of our postseason successes, and we didn't have a ton, but we had some really good ones. Again, I talked about our swimming team, that's the four that we had qualify for districts. We had a few that were really close in districts, but we just quite can't get out of this area just yet. But I'm telling you, two years, we're gonna have a state qualifier, and I'm gonna be standing up here talking about that state qualifier, and I really believe it's gonna be Hazel Culver. We had a regional placer in wrestling, in girls' wrestling, Paige Iglesias. For those of you who know Paige, she's a great, she's a great kid. She was a regional placer. The cool thing about this is that she's always gonna be the first. You know, when it comes into this and she's the first wrestler to do it and the first female wrestler to do it in this building, I'm thrilled that it was Paige, because I know what she put into it. She wrestled against boys for three years, and then they finally introduced it, and she got to wrestle against girls and really show how good she really was. Softball, they fell 1-0 to Lebanon last week, heartbreaking loss. In the next few years, I'm telling you, there's a couple fiery freshmen that are there. Now, we've got some seniors to replace, but this softball team could be special in the next few years as well. And part of that is Steve Heckman, again, getting those freshmen to come out and stay with it. But part of it is, now that they've kind of felt some success, they're gonna want to continue that success. Track regional qualifiers, we have some track people going this week, as a matter of fact, tomorrow. With the tremendous increase in our girls' numbers, it was no shock to me that we had a qualifier. I think what was the shock to me is that it was a freshman. Our freshman class of female athletes is extraordinary. She qualified in the 300 hurdles, it's Danity Sims. Our boys relay team qualified in the 4x100. I look for them to get back to the state again this year, they were there a few years ago, I look for them to get back this year as well. Our athletic recognitions, we spend a lot of time on social media, and it's not just like open air for us, it really is because we care about our kids. We try to promote as best we can through Facebook and our website and through social media. Wings on Brookwood, she's probably one of the, she is the best sponsor that I could ever imagine. I will say this, she is a very dear friend to me. She is a tremendous Big Blue supporter. She believes in buying and shopping locally and all that stuff. We are blessed to have Wings on Brookwood as our athlete of the week sponsor. We sponsored over 100 athletes this year. She buys t-shirts, she gives them all gift cards every single week. We had three signing days, we had 13 student-athletes sign to move on. Those are good numbers, but obviously, we'd like to see those higher. But 13 kids moving on to represent the Big Blue in college is an awesome thing because I think that everything that they got out of Hamilton High, they'll be able to put into their college life, and I think that that's a real important thing for them to have going forward. They know the Big Blue way, and I think as they move on into college, they'll be very successful. We had Hall of Fame in February, and this was a tremendously strong class. If you look, Adam Panki was on there, Gary Richardson, Brittany Lightfoot was a state qualifier, Matt Hubbard was a great basketball player. This was a tremendous class, and I think that what resonated most with me when we listened to their speeches was what their time at Big Blue meant to them and what effect it had on them and their life moving forward. And that resonated through all eight speeches that night, the value that they put on Big Blue athletics. And for me, that is so important because that's what I want our kids to say 10 years from now and 20 years from now and 30 years from now. That's where I want them to be. So, to hear those speeches and to know that that resonated with them, I'm excited to hear what our kids say 10, 15, 20 years from now as well. Scholarship award winners, Tim Reed was an amazing guy in our district. This scholarship allows his legacy to live on. It went to three young ladies. Brittany Rightnow was a cheerleader. Hannah Lewis was active in fine arts. Paige Iglesias was a wrestler and a softball player. Kettering Health, which is another one of our sponsors, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. and Mrs. Matthews, I should have brought them today to assist you. Anyways, they gave us five $1,000 scholarships. Three went to Big Blue athletes, and two come from our, kind of our CTE program, one from exercise science and one from healthcare science. They get that $1,000 to purchase the things either before they go to college or they can use in college. That is a great partnership that we have, not only for our training thing, but what they give back to our kids is tremendous for us as well. Coach Bill Sharp, he moved here in 1930. His family, he was known as coach, but his family, since he has passed, they started a scholarship. And so, we get to choose two athletes every year, and they give a $1,000 scholarship to them at the Hall of Fame Dinner, and they get recognized there. We chose Casey Brand and Paige Iglesias for this, so they will come back in February, and the son of Bill Sharp will give them their $1,000 check that night. The Hamiltonian Spotlight, I get the Hamiltonian, so it's always really cool when you open it up and you see our kids in it. And when I look at who was in it this year, you had Michaela Platt. This is a kid who plays, well, she's a cheerleader, she swam, she ran track, she dances. I'm sure I'm missing something along the way, because I'm sure she could do a whole lot more. Riley Lux is one of the greatest leaders in our building. She's a silent leader, but she just does things the right way, and she expects good things from the people around her. And then Cooper Matthews, I mean, missed her 39 points this year. So, that Hamiltonian Spotlight, when we can get our kids in there and get them recognized for the good things they're doing, I totally appreciate what the Hamiltonians doing. We did a fundraiser this year, this profit succeeded $20,000. If you would have asked me at the start of this what we would have made, I may have told you $5,000 or $6,000. My coaches rose to the occasion, and I say that very sincerely. They went above and beyond for me, and they allowed this fundraiser to be an extreme success. What's new and what's coming? Just for me, I'm all about the community piece, and I feel like I've been behind a desk for a while now, and it's important for me to get out. So, my goal this year, this coming year, is to get out in the community more, do some more lunches out. I want to pass out tickets to our community. I want people to come to our events, I want them to be a part of our events. I want people to know the face and the name together from the athletic department. I need to be more accountable with everything, and I say that, even though I feel like I work really hard, you always have to have that goal of being better. So, for me, that's one thing I want to focus on next year. We need to move up. Our GMC All-Sports Trophy, we gotta move that up. And I'm getting ready to go to a coaches' meeting after this, and I'm really gonna start, you know, kind of turning those screws a little bit with our coaches to raise those expectations because we are fully capable. Increase our numbers, and those have been going up. We have increased our numbers the last three years. This year, we probably increased our female numbers more than anything, so if those numbers continue to improve, that means that we're getting some better numbers in our middle school. I hate to keep talking about COVID, but hopefully, we're coming out of that, and as our kids start to become more involved, hopefully, those numbers go up and those numbers continue to improve for us. For me, it's just to get better with our middle schools. I feel like there's still a gap between us, and that's a big focus for me moving forward, is to make sure that as we now have combined almost all of our middle-school sports, that I want to make sure that I have my hand kind of in that with our middle-school guys more so that they feel a direct connection. Because if they have that connection, as I walk into this coaches' meeting tonight and I tell our coaches to be program directors, that's what I need to focus on as well. I've gotta direct our programs better as well. Our weight rooms, we have two amazing weight rooms, you're gonna see pictures here. All of our teams have got to get into there, so I'm gonna make that one of my focuses. We have a baseball scoreboard that's kind of on the table right now, I'm hoping that we can kind of move forward with that. Our parents getting more involved, I'm meeting with our boosters this Friday, we have a new booster president, and he has some great ideas, but I think that getting our parents to become more involved is a big step for us because it lets the parents know that we want them there, and we want to do a parent forum, we want to be more informative with them, we want to invite them into things and for them to feel welcome being a part of the Big Blue family. Long-term considerations, and these are my pipe dreams, guys, don't get like, don't, I know that Jeremy or Pray over there, like, you know. I would love to turf our baseball field, and I say that very sincerely. What that would do for us is it would give us an additional turf field to practice. We could recoup some of those monies because we would be able to rent in the summer our that facility. Our baseball and softball fields are great, but turfing it gives us extra options that I don't think that we have right now. that I don't think that we have right now, given that we're kind of landlocked and the turfing of the field would do that. A new multipurpose facility, and again, pipe dreams, but you, you have to dream and you have to have that vision for what we can do. Any kind of multipurpose room where we could get more, a different space, where we could get more batting cages or a little bit more indoor turf for people to use would be a great thing. Our sponsorships for football are up, so we've got to work on some new sponsors. We're keeping those. And continue to fundraise to offset those expenses that we continue to grow and, and we, those expenses continue to get bigger as far as officials and uniforms and all that. So being a big part of fundraising and getting that done is important to me. Our new press box, for those of you who have not seen it, it is very, it's beautiful. It has a blue floor, which I'm super proud of. It's kind of, it's definitely a cool look. It's very streamlined. I cannot wait to open it for the Baden game, kind of as our inaugural night. And it, it was definitely needed and it actually makes the, I think the shworm, you probably noticed it, it looks a little more streamlined. Looks a little more modern than it did before. So our press box is amazing. Our weight rooms again, the district turned, gave a lot of money to get these up and running. The one at the freshman campus and the one at the high school, they are both state of the art. They have everything that they need. Our strength coach has even brought in a team builder app that we can, it's kind of like them being there when they're not there. And so again, getting everybody in to use these will be important to me. Our golf simulator took a long time to get done, to get a fence up there. Can't wait to hit a little bit more, you know. It'll be great for our golf team, but I also tell you, it allowed me to burn some steam off as well occasionally. Nothing like going up there and hitting a driver when you're a little frustrated. Our elementary teachers, I met with them and they were so excited to, to want to be a part to help us out. Our, our secondary sports, kind of our bowling, our golf, our tennis, our numbers are really falling in some of those. So I, I went to their PD in May and I asked them what they thought and how they could help us. And this is some of the things that they kind of sent to me that they're doing and it is my hope that we can continue to kind of build that relationship. Send athletes into those elementaries when they're out of school, maybe send them on some field trips just to get them more exposure into some of those sports to help us out. And last but not least, let's not forget, mark your calendars. Probably the biggest date for us coming up anytime soon. It is the Baden-Hamilton game and just a little bit of history to maybe motivate everybody a little bit more because I was a little shocked. Baden and Hamilton, they've met four times on the football field over the years. 1980 and 1981 and then again in 1999 and 2000. Baden has won three of those four games. We need to turn that around and no pressure, Coach Crouch, to get that turned around this year, but I'm excited. This is a great community event and I know when I talk to the boosters, our boosters, and I know when I talk to Jeff Melzer from Baden, we want to really get our community involved during that whole week leading up to the game. Whether it be a citywide pep assembly, something just to promote what a great community this is. And it's something that I'm looking forward to. It is something that I, I'm excited that I was able to bring back and it's something I'm glad that I'm a part of. But I think most importantly, I just think for our community, just to see these two teams on the field together is very important. And with Adam Dunn.
Well, that's a lot.
I know. I'm sorry. It was, it was a lot to pack in there.
No, that's, it's a lot and, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate you, Missy. And, and your passion for athletics. I do have one question. What is a foot sole?
So foot sole is kind of an indoor soccer.
Okay.
We use it on our basketball court, but it's a great indoor soccer and he does it for such cheap rates that our kids actually get to come in and they play multiple games on Sundays.
Okay, I was thinking maybe a foot wedge, but no, foot sole, okay. You would know about that. But anyway, thank you and thanks to all of the coaches and, and we really appreciate what you all do.
Thanks.
Missy, I'm glad you're not enthusiastic about what's going on in the athletic department. Just kidding, but I, I think your enthusiasm is carrying over to everything else as well. And you are right. I, I do predict that the football team will be much better. He's had a year with him. I, I know that, since I know Steve Heckman so well, I do know that, you know, he's going to have a good team for several more years. And just, and Elizabeth Wagner and the swimming and bringing it down to the, to the grade schools. You know, she started with three kids, if anybody doesn't realize that. She started with three swimmers when she took this over about five or six years ago. And now she's got a pretty good team. So in all the other programs that are, they're growing. It's exciting, you know, and it's going to get more children involved, which is important as well.
Thank you.
So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Missy, for your excitement to the athletic department and make sure that you're seeing it grow. But the beautiful thing about it is that you may think like, okay, it hasn't grown a whole lot, but there's been consistency. So anytime there's consistency, there has been results. I, I, I love sports, so therefore, you know, this is, I'm definitely glad to have somebody in there equal that, that enjoys it. Because it's a lot of your time, you know what I mean? You spend a lot of time at games and, you know, making sure things go right. And shout out to your team who works really well at assisting you, make sure that everything goes well. So again, I appreciate your consistency, your professionalism and representing the district. And shout out to Caitlin and J.C. and Paige. I had the opportunity to coach them in basketball and they are really, really great athletes and really some really amazing young ladies. So it was great to be at graduation with them and seeing them graduate and shake their hand, give them hugs. So just really great kids.
Thank you.
Missy, every time I see you, I tell you, you did a great job. The energy, look back and do it. Hamilton Athletics, you're awesome. And we're going in the right direction. I hate turning it on, but you know, I, I hear from teachers and I hear from, and I hear from, you know, students, just, you know, what the energy is.
And the interest they have now in playing sports in Hamilton. And you know, the, the football team has a winning attitude. They, they walk with a little swagger. But I also hear from other coaches, from other, you know, leagues and, and teams, just how professional our teams are anymore. They're not a bunch of thugs. They're, they're good kids, good athletes. And the fact that, you know, with the academics shows that they're good scholars too. And I just, what you're doing with the program is just night and day from where it came from and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Missy, I can still remember talking to you a number of years ago and I think your face was in a little disbelief. And you're starting to build what we're looking for. Jamie, Mike, Arvy, I, I know all of you put in tremendous amounts of time and energy with our kids. I also know that as a kid myself, sports is the reason I came to school every day. And, you know, and for a lot of our student athletes, it is the reason that they're coming to school. It is the reason that they're working hard in the classroom. And the experiences they have athletically will help them the rest of their lives, no matter what they do. And so we, we talk an awful lot about curricular programs and all of those are extremely important. But if our students aren't learning as much from participating on a sports team as they are in a chemistry class, then we have to look critically at our athletic program and say, why not? And yes, it's different skills. Yes, it's different, different components, but they have to learn and they are. You know, 53% of our students are named all academic. Fifty, that, that, that's every other student. That, that, that's a pretty significant number, especially with the number of participants that we have. You know, we have over 400 participants. So half of those students were named all academic, which shows that the emphasis is in the right place. Because ultimately, you know, if we have students that are extremely talented athletically, we want them to have options to, to play beyond high school and they're not going to have those options if the, if the academics aren't there. And so it has to be a blend and a mixture. And so, you know, I'm thrilled with the direction that we're going with all of our programs. And, you know, I look forward next year when you're standing up here, you know, to have a few district championships maybe. I mean, we were very close in softball this year overtime, our extra inning, you know, 1-0 game.
Yeah, it's rough.
Finals, but, but I mean, the future's bright for Hamilton and, and all of our sports teams. And, and I want to thank you for, for leading that.
Thank you very much.
Sorry. Dave, you want to help me with my? Next on the agenda is alumni relations. I believe Mr. Isgro wanted to discuss that.